Okay, this is Town of Monroe Board of Finance Special Meeting Thursday, July twentieth, seven P M. Please note this meeting will be recorded, made available on the town's website pursuant to state law. If you're attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless you were speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title if applicable at the outset of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this board of participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat feature will not be considered for this meeting. So we officially call to order. I'll do a roll call. Greg Benno.
Present.
Steve Kirsch.
Present.
Rebecca O'Donnell.
Present.
Catherine Stoffer.
Present.
Samantha Spino, did I get that right?
Yep, you got it right.
Alright, thank you. I'm always nervous the first time. About three months I screwed up Greg's name.
It's on record that I corrected him.
He did. Ron Budowski.
I am here.
Heidi Mead.
She's not here tonight. She's not here.
Okay. Joe Cobser.
I'm here.
Sam Hahn.
Here.
Alright, who am I missing?
Frank, yes, sir, Mike.
I thought you were there, Frank. Okay, thank you. Great. Alright, I'm just warning everybody, I might need to pop at seven forty-five. I have dinner. That was kind of thrown on me late, so apologize, but hopefully we'll get a lot of stuff done. So I'll let Rebecca take over when I have to jump. Approval for the regular meeting moments, minutes and voting record for June fifteenth.
Steve Kirsch, I move to approve the regular meeting minutes and voting record for June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Second.
Okay, any discussions, questions? Hearing none, any opposed? We pass unanimously. Excellent. First selectmen, you are up.
Nothing that we're not covering later on.
Even better. Superintendent to schools.
Hey, doing? I just wanted to just fill some people in on some new law that I shared with the with the Board of Ed and his attorney, or Dave Redmond, he's got here, he was helping me out as we go through the the eleventh hour of the Legislative Section. But there's a few things I just wanted to just I put on the Board of Ed's radar, I wanted to keep on everybody's radar. And there's more stuff that we have to unpack, but three that are kind of somewhat two of them that are relatively, you know, will feel pretty immediately. I'm comfortable where we are, but I just want to keep everybody in the loop. First, there was a was a change to the special education law. That, you know, previously it used to be that students that received specially education services could receive them until they were until the end of the school year when they turned twenty-one. Then it changed to they would receive special education services until they turned twenty-two. The new law is now they receive special education services until the end of the school year in the year in which they turn twenty-two. So, you know, we have a student who may be turning twenty-two in September, October, that we've budgeted for that. You know, now, you know, we're going to incur some additional costs. They will be eligible for excess cost reimbursement, so we're keeping a close eye on it. I just wanted to keep folks apprised of that. Another one was a a law to approve, to make it so all students, a graduation requirement for all students to take personal finance before they graduate. Which, yeah, I think we all would agree that having those skills are really important. The tricky thing was that they made it in place for the class of twenty twenty-seven, so that's this incoming freshman class. So personal finance is currently probably our most popular elective. We did have a lot of, you know, unmet requests last year that we just couldn't fill, so we actually just added a business teacher. So hopefully that will help with this as well. And then the last piece, which, you know, should offer some, hopefully some relief next year, it goes into effect next year, is the is a new age for kindergarten. I don't know if you saw, but it was the last in the country in terms of with the latest cutoff date of September, oh, sorry, of January first. So you needed to be five before January first to be eligible for kindergarten. Pretty much everywhere, most other states in the country, it's all, it's September first is the cutoff. So next year it will be September first. So we'll be keeping an eye on that. That should hopefully give us a little relief. We've gotten hit, you know, we had the two extra sections of kindergarten this year with enrollment, so hopefully that will give us a little a little buffer, you know, next year. It will also mean, because the other area where we've been having pressure is in preschool. A smaller population of students, but some kids that are in preschool will now stay there for an additional year as well. So I just wanted to keep everyone aware of that. Mike, I'll send you a letter as well. I think by statute, I don't know if anyone has ever sat on it in the past, but we have our administrator negotiations coming up. And I'll send you a letter if anyone wanted to say on that. In about a month or so. And I'm sure we'll talk budget with the budget, so we'll talk where we are there, some ideas that have been ruminating with us.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. EMS Building Committee Meeting Minutes. Think that's just for the record, is that, Steve? I mean, Ken?
Ron, Ron was under the impression that somebody wanted to see them, so he just threw them in.
Got it. Put them in there. Great.
Mike, this is Steve. Yeah, I mean, I know we had talked about it. I read through these and there were a number of items over the course of these three months that the building committee chose not to do, all for legitimate reasons, things that were not necessarily in the original scope of work, et cetera. One that struck me was the the painting of the floor, the other was a line for the gas grill. I don't know how their budget's going to come out, but assuming they didn't have funds. You know, there's certain things like that that I think the town should be willing to do for a brand-new facility, number one, and number two, for the benefit of the volunteers that give so much back to the town. We're not talking a lot about a lot of money, and I would maybe like to revisit this, you know, some town down the road. Or maybe taking some money from the undesignated fund or someplace else to see if we can, you know, really top off that building nicely and do something for the volunteers. So that's just my thoughts.
Mr. Chairman. Mike?
Yep.
I've already communicated, many communications, the chair of that committee and EMS. We're aware there's a lot of punchless items left, and I've already said to the extent that, you know, you know, the funding is not available on the project and everything is on the table as regards to whether it's out of operating costs or some other funding source that might have to come back before this board. So those conversations are already happening. We wouldn't let things
We're not gonna leave, we're not gonna flat leave EMS.
Are necessary if you left undone, or at least not, at least not put on the schedule for a future, to address in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, public participation. Anybody in the room?
Nobody here.
Anybody on the phone? Alright, jump into new business. Steve, you're up. Transfer remaining bound, bounds, the police department.
Motion first, do you want?
I'll make, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
He might as well make the motion and then we can.
Okay, new business item five A. I will now read the following resolution and ask for its adoption. Resolve that the following budget transfers be approved pursuant to chapter eight, section seven G of the Town Charter for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Forty thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-five cents from the Police Renovations Fund and forty thousand dollars, forty thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-five cents to Capital Reserve Debt Service.
Greg Benno, my second. Excellent. Alright, Steve, obviously, keep doing that.
Thanks, Mike. So so for those who don't know, the Police Department renovations project started well before my time back in two thousand eleven, before my time certainly as selectman. It was brought to my attention several years ago by the then then police chief that the project had never really been formally closed out, which I confirmed with Ron at the time. In further investigating it, there were some, there were some issues related to that construction. At the time, the town was holding retainage for the contractor. As a result, a lot of those issues were still pending and not resolved, and there were potential claims ongoing. So in consultation with the town attorney at the time, we opted to wait until all section limitations had expired, which actually had to be extended further because of COVID in consultation with the current town attorney. That said, we are well past that time period. I've spoken with our current town attorney and he is in agreement that that we can, you know, try to wrap this up at this time. Ron has had several conversations with bond counsel. This is a bonded project and the remaining funds can only be used in two categories. One, for any work on the building that was outstanding or of an issue. Anything after that must go towards debt service. We did utilize some of the funds to pick off outstanding issues, the largest of which was a an A-SAT controller that was, they, when when the building was done, they only did half essentially. They covered part of the building and not the other part. There are a couple other smaller things. What is left now is the forty thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars. And so I would like to formally, I think we'd all like to formally close this project out since as you know, the project was for practical purposes done quite some time ago, but we did need to let the, let the calendar tick away, so to speak, so.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on this? Alright, hearing none. Any opposed? Hearing none. We pass unanimously. Thank you. Resolution for first electmen to transfer available funds from HR wage adjustment for twenty twenty-four.
Steve Kirsch, I will now read the following resolution and ask for its adoption. A resolution to authorize the first selectmen to transfer available funds from the HR wage adjustment account for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Resolve that pursuant to chapter eight, section seven G of the Charter for the Town of Monroe, that the first selectmen is authorized to transfer available funds from the HR wage adjustment account and that these transfers are necessary to effectuate retroactive and prospective salary payments, A, pursuant to certain collective bargaining agreements as authorized and approved by the town council, and B, as determined by the first selectmen for certain unaffiliated employees not to exceed eighty thousand dollars in the aggregate.
Greg Benno, my second.
Okay. Ken, you wanna speak to the?
So thank you. This is a standard resolution we've been doing
Exactly.
As the new fiscal year starts, we do have some collective bargaining agreements that are in the process of being, you know, finalized and will be presented shortly to town council. And obviously, we have the the Don Union employees as well, as, you know, July first, we always start work on wage increases as well. So it's just our standard kind of somewhat standard motion at this point.
Okay. Any discussion? Alright, hearing none. Any opposed? Hearing none, we pass. Excellent. Might get me to dinner. It's actually quite nice. Okay, review of the twenty twenty-three financial reports. Year-to-date general fund, anybody have any questions on that?
I had a few, but I think Ron.
I was gonna say, is Ron anything you want to call out?
Yeah, I'll call out a couple things, Mike. I am gonna pass on the revenue because it's pretty self-explanatory. I don't want to steal Frank's thunder.
Perfect.
So on the expenditure side, on page two of the year-to-date budget report, the Board of Finance contingency of five fifty-seven that's available will remain available. The only money transferred out of that this year were for the electric that this board transferred out.
Okay.
The on page four, under Human Resources, there are two large surpluses, the largest being HR insurance. That was driven by the, you know, it put out to bid the insurance carrier and realized a significant savings there during the fiscal year, as it was only. HR wage adjustment, there was money budgeted this year. I believe we'll be asking the Board to to transfer that money at a future time because there are current open contracts, so that wage adjustment number will be looking to transfer. The other thing I wanted to point out on page five, there's an adjustment, the adjustments actually been made. You can see OEP and retirement lines, one's way over budget, one's way under budget, which is something was posted to the pension line. It should have been posted to the OEP line. So that's already been taken care of.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted, a couple other things quickly, Mike, snow removal are for the year, obviously, will be way under budget there. One hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Page seventeen, in the town side package, the Board of Ed number is not an updated number, so just regards that number. On the, I'll get to the updated numbers when we discuss Board of Ed. Debt service is showing a, that we're over budget, four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. We just need to transfer from the the debt service line within Capital Reserve premium that's sitting in there for to knock against the debt service. So that'll, that'll that deficit will be, you know, will be wiped out when we close. And, you know, just to go over, you know, updated number, right now, the projected expenditure surplus is just about three million dollars. Revenue surplus is about two, so we're looking at about a five million dollar surplus projected right now. Preliminary. Anyone have any questions?
No, you've got all the minds.
I have one question.
These questions.
It's, this is probably just a functional question, and some new here. So if I look at like, no, town hall maintenance, obviously, that's something that fluctuates, hard to predict. But I guess I was wondering why the electrical had transfers of twenty-four thousand dollars and then was still, and then was like way under budget, I guess, of course, there was something else.
Yeah, so, so, and again, that was the transfer from the contingency. So we had renegotiated our electric contract and we I don't know if you guys recall, but the rates actually increased this year because we were smoothing out future years' rates. And at that time, we were projecting that we were gonna need that. We actually didn't. We didn't need it on this side and we didn't need it on the Board of Ed's side either.
Okay, makes sense. Well, thank you.
Perfect.
So the B is just the quarterly crowd balances for all funds, which we usually don't really speak to. It's in there. I mean, if anyone has any questions, we certainly answer them.
Alright, anything on the general fund year-to-date?
Budget for the Yeah, so we're for bed next. So, right now, I'm before the fund activity statement, what I included in there, which works on Monday, was an up-to-date where we're tracking right now. Now, we're still closing out purchase orders. Still finalizing things, but currently, the overall surplus on the Board of Ed is at five hundred and seventy-five thousand. It is a little less than one percent of the so now.
And Ron, is that with knocking off some of the things we had spoken about?
It is. So I don't know if you know, somebody, Dave or Joe would like to speak to that.
Sure.
Both of them would. Yeah, a couple things we'd knock off with that on the capital plan is the there was some septic work that needed to be done in Massacre, that was a large span of height from the from the building out, back end of the softball field and then all along down to the the third baseline of the softball field as well. That's getting knocked out right now. Actually, that work's gonna start, actually, I think tomorrow. The pool filter was another piece that we knocked on in the capital project, the capital list as well. So I know we've been talking internally about, you know, hopefully with some of this, you know, some of this surplus to be able to fund the facility study and take that off the capital, capital list as well. And Dave and I, too, I know there was a red box on the capital list, too, and, you know, inquiring about that as well.
Yeah, I think once we get that final number, probably will be a stronger number next month when we bring that up. Because I would definitely support taking care of the capital project. Anything in the capital projects and certainly the facility study would make sense.
Thank you.
Mike, if I can stay fair, if I can chip in, I just wanted to thank the board because when we were here and we discussed chipping off these other projects, we were able to get rid of the deficit by chipping, you know, off of these projects. It also helps us greatly with the maintenance issues. We're still winding up with surplus. So, yes, we would like to ask that the board consider, once you have final numbers, doing some things so that we can start the facility study right away. And also the press box would be two things that you wouldn't have to bond for, and they're priorities to us. So if you would consider that in the future, we'd appreciate it. And, and just thanks for the transparency and the cooperation. We were able to get a lot done, we were able to solve this year.
I would love it if you get us some, you know, maybe next month's meeting, we could have some firm numbers on the press box and the best guesses on the, because I know that'll have to go out for bid and we don't want to be too obvious with how much we put aside for that, but
Right, right.
bids for that.
So, Mike, we should get a formal request from them at some point from, based on Board of Ed action?
Yeah, I'm hoping next month, you know.
Okay. So, okay.
Perfect. Alright, thank you, gentlemen. Tax collector.
We asked me for, we ended up with one hundred and fifty-four thousand over but we ended the year a little less than last year, but unfortunately, that's the the times people are very reluctant and paying, and I've noticed very slow this year, too. So I'm hoping it picks up.
Mike, I've got one question for them. The people who pay in full, you know, you said there was a percentage in the past. Did you see a drop-off so far this year in payments? From those kinds of people?
A lot of people are paying half. With last year, a lot of people used to pay, who paid in full before are now paying in half. Also, we have a lot of new people in town. But we did see an increase of new cars because our park stickers have gone up quite a bit from last time. So we have a lot of people buying new cars over the last year, seeing cars are finally coming in and they're being available.
Cool.
It's just, I'm getting a lot of phone calls of people saying, I can make partial payments because I can't afford it. And I say you make partial payments, but you'll just have interest on the I pay balance if it's not paid. Fortunately, a big trending return checks again like we did last year. It's not the end of the month, but I, I think we've done like twelve return check so far this year, which is middle of the month. I mean, they're doing what they can. I, it's
See, I just wondered what the year was.
I mean, it's, it's hard to tell so early the month. I mean,
Right.
Not people pay to the end of the month. They all hold on to the money to the end. But I'm not seeing people paying in full as much as I did in the past.
Okay.
I have a question. Last month, we talked about going to court with some of the taxpayers, and there was an issue with the interest legislation.
I have not, the, our next court date is in August. So I have not had been in front of a judge since we spoke last. So I'm hoping that they read the statutes and everything else, understand what they're talking about in front of the judge. But, yeah, it's scheduled, I can't remember, August fifteenth, the middle of the month. I don't want to say for sure, but it's the middle of the month is that we go back to court. There was no court date settled. Our counsel put everything off the August, and they know it's very hard to sit there.
Busy time for you.
So that's the next time I go to court in August. So I have not heard anything since then.
Okay. Alright, hopefully it just gets.
I, hopefully, the judge would be more informed.
There's no, no law.
No law.
No way they're ruling whatever, stand up.
Yeah.
I'm just hoping because the law states very clearly, so hopefully he'll be
Understanding.
There was, there was a bill to lower that statutory rate, but it did not, did not pass.
Yeah, there was a lot of, I, I believe, I believe that's what he'd been looking at because he couldn't believe his colleagues would let anything like this go. But it was, nothing has changed, so I don't have to argue them anymore, I hope.
Let's hope. Alright, treasurer.
Ron had mentioned that we had a surplus on the interest income. The number came in right around where we talked about last meeting. We said somewhere between two and two-one, it came in at two million ninety-nine against a budget of two hundred thousand, so about a billion nine better, which is always nice. Fiscal year twenty-four, based on current interest rates, the six-month T-bill ladder that we're building, we're probably on a positive track again for fiscal year twenty-four. Nowhere near that type of surplus in twenty-four, but based on the number we put in when we're going through the budget, we're probably gonna see a positive impact of that as we go forward in twenty-four. This month, actually, as of today, we purchased another two million dollars of six-month treasuries. The rate we got on that was five point four four, which is excellent rate. We purchased it
Yes.
Yeah, we purchased it using a three-month T-bill that was maturing, and then we moved another million from the stiff account over. We anticipate we need two more months and we will have that bracket of six months where we have two months, two million that will mature every month. And if the rates continue to go where they're going, we will just keep rolling it over, which will have twelve million dollars in that account. And that's what Jenny. The current stiff rate is at five point one five. We're down to about two point nine in the actual state stiff account. Our Newtown Savings Bank, we get the stiff rate, but the safe stiff account is about two point nine. And that's where we continue to draw it down from for the treasuries. So that seems to be moving in a positive direction. Each month, we're doing the treasuries. We're staying pretty much ahead of the stiff rate. The stiff rate this month has kind of stayed relatively flat, fluctuating between five point one one percent and five point one five. So the five point four four is very nice.
Yeah.
That's it.
Thanks, guys. It's Mike, Mike tweeted, I don't know.
Sorry, no, I was just, I was down in the lobby, so I didn't want you guys to hear it all. Okay, no, that's great. Frank, just remind me, what was the final number we settled on in the budget for this year?
One, two, I believe. You know, I don't, I don't have
That's what I thought, so.
Yeah, the initial number that Ken put in was, was a million, and I believe when we did the adjustment, we went to one, two.
Right, we bumped it up a little bit.
Yeah, I believe so.
Right, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure for everybody new. Yeah, no, that was my recollection, too, is we ended up with a million, too, but I always like to confirm that. Alright, anything else, anybody has for the?
Mike, ju- just a reminder, we talked about setting up a meeting with, uh, the Town Council Strategic Planning Committee to talk about roads this summer.
Yes, I sent an email this week to the chairman. So hopefully we'll have something on the schedule shortly.
Thank you.
Perfect. Uh, anybody got anything else?
Steve Kirsch motion to adjourn.
Catherine Stoffer. Oh, I'll second.
Great, thanks, guys.